Let's get the meeting going. Planning board meeting for November twenty one, twenty four. You can do this, please. I'd like to introduce to the flag the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all." Welcome everyone and thank you for coming. First item on the agenda. We don't have the minutes to review and therefore we'll defer the prime minutes for review to another time or event. Possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to the town code. Here's a request from twenty six thirty, thirty nine, seventeen M, which is nine twenty Associates LLC. It's a very brief email. I would like to file for a six-month extension for twenty six thirty nine Route seventeen M. I am currently in the process of getting a well test done. John Montaigne of G P I Engineering is who will be conducting the necessary test. That would bring us to...
So what happened, Mr. Attorney General, is during, the set approved May sixteen and was due to expire on November sixteen. We had not heard from the applicant whether they needed an extension or not, but I did realize that they were working toward completing the division. So at your last meeting, you extended it to December nineteenth and you asked me to reach out to the applicant. We have a written request which you just read. So it would be six months from the original expiration date of November sixteenth. So that would bring you to your May fifteenth in two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you. Ashley, anything?
No.
Okay. Do you want to, anyone have any comments? Okay, so I moved to authorize the extension. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It passes unanimously. As to, Sean, did we get anything from Freeman? Because I did not. This is a single-family residence.
Yeah, so Freeman is a single-family residence or site plan approval. I have now looked it up. Dave Higgins is here. If you'd like, I can give you the dates and everything that were, where you took action on it.
Okay.
So you took action on May eighteen, twenty twenty three, that unconditional site plan approval. Your May sixteen, twenty twenty four meeting extended that approval till this evening. So Mr. Higgins can provide more information if you'd like.
Well, welcome, gentlemen.
Hi.
Good evening. What's going on?
So I spoke to Mr. Freeman just, it was yesterday, the day before. He is in the process of closing on the property to sell it. The new buyer, he said, does not have any interest in building the house at that front portion where we had that site plan approved for. So he doesn't think that we need the extension. However, I would ask the board maybe to consider extending it six months or, I think it's in May is when it would officially expire. Again, he doesn't think he needs it, but I would just say having the work that we put into it, the board put into it, staying down inside just in case they change their mind. I hate to have to redo all the work all over again. So if the board would consider anything, that would appreciate it and if not, I think that's okay too.
And that would be an extension until, you said?
May eighteen.
May eighteen. Any comments from the board? Anyone? All right, so would someone like to make a motion?
I'll do my. And this is, this would be the final extension for it?
Yeah, that looks good.
Diane makes the motion to extend it to May eighteen, twenty twenty five?
I second it.
Second it. Well, Seamus? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
I don't know if you want me to stay here with you for the next one too, I think.
You may as well stay there. Okay.
We're missing two guys. Should Neil be up here?
Yes. Yeah, I'm more practical. Comfortable at Walt Whaley's right now.
We should make note we have a call. Okay, all one, one hall. The Italian Foundation Regenerative Farms. You're on.
So this one, we did send a letter to Grace earlier this week. Yeah, I think it was beginning of this week. Basically, the letter says that the farm has been operating as the farm successfully without the restaurant. So at this point in time, and that's what we were here for before, the site plan was for the conversion of the barn to a restaurant. And at this point in time, they don't believe that they need the restaurant to function successfully at the farm. So they're absolutely okay with the approval having, you know, being expired, which I believe happens at this meeting. So they have no interest in having it extended. They also wanted to thank the board for the time they put into it. And as I thought as well.
Yeah, and they ask is?
You can let the approval expire, but they're interested in having it renewed.
Yes, and you had previously granted an extension till this evening, I believe, and this was the final extension, so there's no more extension.
So we take no action that it expires?
It would be noted in the minutes that the approval expired.
Chris, the applicant has granted, let it expire.
That was easy, right?
Do we need to vote on that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scotty.
I'll be back.
Sean, shall I deal with, I have a letter from, it's not on your agenda, but we did get a letter from R D M. Want me to handle it or?
It's up to you how you want to handle it.
Very briefly, they are looking for clarification, confirmation from us that their last extension expires on December twentieth, twenty twenty four. There was a little bit of confusion whether it was December sixth or December twentieth. They were issued a approval on December twenty, twenty twenty two. This is their last extension, two years. It is from the date of issuance, which was December twenty, twenty twenty two. So their last extension would end December twenty, twenty twenty four. In my reading of the statute, Sean, any?
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that's the part.
Okay, so they are merely looking for confirmation from us. Do we need to do this by motion?
So I would approve a motion to extend the approval till December twenty.
To just clarify.
Just to clarify exactly, I think what might happen is usually extend to a suspended meeting date. So I think some of the early extensions may have been taken off sometime on that end, so.
If I may, I'm going to move to confirm that their last extension expires on December twentieth, twenty twenty four. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I'm comfortable there.
You're comfortable there. Unanimous, less one. Okay. First item on the agenda then. We have a public hearing tonight, a continuation of a public hearing for seventeen M Flex Building. It's an application for site plan and special permit approval for a warehouse and office on eight point nine more or less acres on along New York State seventeen M Cannon Hill Drive in the I Zone with an A Q three flood, flood plain and ponding and stream corridor and water supply watershed overlays. Sean, you're in.
Sure, I don't know if anybody, the applicant's here this evening, but just to give you some history. You opened the public hearing on August first and you received a comment regarding the balloon test. You adjourned the public hearing to your September nineteenth meeting. At that time, you were looking for input from the D O T. D O T had gotten back the applicant and indicated they were part of traffic impact study. At that time, you adjourned the public hearing to this evening. So I had not received any pertinent correspondence from the D O T. I don't know if the building department has, if they know. You're essentially in the same position you were back in on September nineteenth.
Right.
You're waiting.
As much as we have it scheduled for tonight, we haven't heard yet from the D O T, which I think is the last material dispositive issue. Do we need to proceed with the public hearing and just defer adjournment?
So you can see if there's anyone present from the public to speak on the application, take any comments?
Anyone here? Okay, we do have someone here.
You ready?
We need a motion.
So you had already opened the hearing?
Just continuation, okay. Your name and?
Chairman Johnson, my name is Chris Haley. I'm a homeowner here in the town of Ocean. I've been following this project alone for about a year or so. I've seen plenty done. The town's bent over backwards for this applicant so far as variance is pushing that building forward, making it huge. I pulled the most recent documentation off the town website. We talked briefly about tractor trailers. This is a tractor trailer building, right? And the tractor trailers are going to be coming in and out of Cannon Hill Drive. The best I can tell, this W B sixty seven, it's an eighteen-wheeler, and there are going to be eighteen-wheelers going in there. And if I'm reading this right, if I'm reading this right, tractor trailers coming in off of seventeen M in order to make it into the Flex Building have to come in on the left side of the road. They have to come in against traffic, right? I'm dumbfounded that the town would say, yeah, do this. I'm dumbfounded because it sometimes amazes me that if you're driving down the highway, the only thing that separates us from the oncoming traffic is those two little yellow lines and the notion that we've all agreed to play by the same rules, stay on your side of the road. Here we're asking, telling tractor trailers, come in, cross over the left side of the road, and then swing hard coming into the, into the Flex Building. I picture tractor trailer drivers coming in, you know, hoping nobody's on the road coming this way, hoping nobody's in the parking lot because they need the entire parking lot to make it in, right? So tractor trailer, tractor trailer drivers coming in, throwing in Ovena, I hope this works out. No tractor trailer driver should ever be driving saying, I hope this works out. A collision with an eighteen-wheeler can be and will be catastrophic to a small vehicle. Maybe eighteen-wheeler head-on, head-on, you got a shot. But right here in the drawing, it shows crossing over the other side. Now, you've got vehicles coming out, New Jersey Trailer is back there, they do trailer repairs, you've got the buses coming out in the morning. So it's not that you can say that Cannon Hill doesn't get busy. It does. And you've got literally in the plans, a tractor trailer crossing over to the left side of the road. From the very beginning, I have said that this project, the size of this building is too big for the parcel plan. And I understand that the applicant wants to squeeze every nickel out of that piece of property. That's his job. That's what he's supposed to do. But we don't live in the Wild West. You don't get to make up your own rules. And that's what this board does, right? Make sure that nobody's going to get injured. As drawn, I cannot imagine the town would allow this. If I were to get into an accident, I know my lawyer is definitely going to pull up the YouTube video where some guy said, hey, you're allowing the tractor trailer to cross over to the other side of the road. It's really a bad idea. And eventually, the town's going to be held responsible for this. I'm pleading with you. Please, make it make sense. The building is too big for this parcel of land. My name's Chris Haley. I thank you very much for your time.
We thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we could save Mr. Haley's attorney the time for going through the YouTube video. The applicant, and he's a hundred percent right in everything he said. I just want to give some context to the board. So this came in, the applicant did a turning analysis, a hundred percent correct. The turning analysis shows the turning vehicle from the wrong way. My July twenty-six comments, which I'm reading from, said the turning analysis of W B sixty-seven interstate semi-trailer entering the site from Cannon Hill Drive shows the approaching truck traveling in the wrong left lane and should be revised. If you remember, when you had this on your meeting in August, you had adjourned the public hearing, but the applicant not designed revised plans until they hear back from the D O T. So this is, is on the list. This is absolutely wrong and will be revised. But you were looking for the applicant to integrate these plans into any plan the D O T requires to improve it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. As always, you give a very concise answer and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak as to this matter?
Get up.
You're up?
Can't say it any better than he said, but I agree with him.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, if there are no further comments, I think we can move to close the public hearing? No?
You want to keep it open until you hear from?
The D O T? Okay, all right.
So it'd be a motion to adjourn the public hearing till?
It's been since August. If you want to give them three months, if you want to give them six months, I don't know what you want.
There's no reason why we can't give them six months and then if he has stuff sooner, he can come back and ask.
But can't you close the public hearing and wait for the D O T to come back?
Actually, what happens under your code is once you close the public hearing, you have to make action on the application in sixty-two days once the applicant gives you the extension.
Right. Okay, the meeting open. I think I agree with you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn it for six months?
Yeah. When was it submitted, Sean, to the D O T?
They, I know we're now the date that it was submitted, but on September thirteenth, the applicant said that they had received comments from the D O T. And essentially, the comments were, send us a traffic impact study.
Oh, okay.
So I'm presuming it took them a couple of weeks to prepare that study and resubmit it.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Neil, on E R B, did Louis Adamas have anything to say about the truck?
He's essentially saying the same thing, dear.
Saying the same thing.
The way it's drawn up right now doesn't work. I think we're really waiting for the D O T to say we're going to have a turning lane off of seventeen, we're going to have to turn and expand the town road. I think we're really looking for that first from the D O T. When we get that, I think this is more to be discussed.
Will, will the D O T make comments on Cannon Hill?
How it ties in, yes, they may.
It's kind of their intersection.
Yes, that's correct.
But they're not going to make comments on the driveway, the entrance or what?
No, the only comment they may make is that the driveway is too close to the intersection. I've seen comments like that. I don't know, I'm not saying it is in this case, I'm just saying they may comment on that.
So Neil made a motion to keep the?
To adjourn public hearing till May fifteenth, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P M, or something like that, I haven't heard.
Give it to him. Give it to him. Who is that? You're running?
Yes, sir.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? Anyone against? Anonymously adjourned. Next one is sixty-nine Celery Avenue, which is formerly known as Esam Sales. The application for amended site plan and special permit for manufacturing on seven and a half more or less acres along Celery Avenue in the A I District with A Q three flood plain and ponding area and stream corridor and water, supplied watershed overlays, revised plans and part two E A F. We're here tonight to deal with the proposed resolution.
And just good evening. Brian Newman from Blue Steen Shapiro, Frank and Barone on behalf of the applicant.
Welcome.
So yeah, I was presented with a draft resolution for conditional approval. And, you know, I have no objections to the draft resolution. My client has retained an engineer to address the comments in the town engineer's memo. And my, my anticipation is the town engineer is going to be able to get, my client engineer is going to be able to get to that relatively soon. So the town engineer will be able to review our, our response, our responses as part of these, as part of one of these specific conditions of approval. And yeah, I mean, if there are any, if there are any questions that the board has that I'm able to answer tonight, I'll, I'll try, I'll try my best to.
Does anyone have any questions?
Basically, it's coming out of the E R B. One of the questions is, we don't quite understand the process that you're going to do this metal. At least one or two of the people on the E R B have been in facilities that have done work with metalwork or where they form it and everything. And at some point in time, you have to degrease the metal. The question is, wait, do you need to degrease it? Are you going to degrease it? How are you going to do that? Because I've been in places where you actually dip into a degreasing thing and then pick it up and let it dry off and then you have to vacuum the beams out of the bank and everything else. I don't know what you're doing. I don't know whether I should be concerned or whether it's just a non-issue.
You know, that's, that equation, I don't, I don't know. I know, I know prior to the last scheduled appearance, I sent to Kelly, not, and like the specs for, the specs for the machine. I, I personally don't have any other information in front of me at the moment as to related, that would answer your question about degreasing.
Yeah, I couldn't see it in everything. Sean, can you help us out here?
The only thing I can tell you is I'm not, I'm, the applicant's other representative, I believe their realtor was here and there was a question, I think Marty may have asked a question about any chemicals on the site. And I think he said that there were no chemicals on the site. So I, they indicated that there wouldn't be. You are worried about it, the future would be, the condition in there that it's not allowed and if they do need them, they have to come back to the board if there's something, if you change the site plan or whatever.
I, I'm very concerned about it and in fact, I hate to even go forward on it because I don't particularly think the realtors personally answered that question.
No, I understand that, but the applicant's made that statement, right? And they?
The applicant's realtor has made that statement.
The applicant's made that statement.
Okay.
All right. You, as the board, you can hold them to that statement, whether the applicant's realtor, attorney, or engineer made that statement. You do that frequently. Applicants will indicate that it will work this way or I won't be open on these hours and put a condition in there to make sure that happens. So it's a little more responsibility to the building department, as you know. But you can definitely include that in there if that's a board recollection and understanding. Or you can defer action on the application. This is listed as either for public hearing or, if my, if my.
Of course, my concern still is, you know, when I, when I actually worked at Westinghouse and we actually dipped it into a pond called a pool. It's probably eight, ten feet deep, whatever, and you took the things in there and you took it out and it was degreased and you let it dry off and all that. I'm concerned that if they had to do something like that here, this also happens to be in a flood plain, which gives me more reason to be concerned if I have a pool that would have dipped stuff in it.
So I, I was going to say, it makes me feel more comfortable. I don't think it will. But when we got the information from the applicant, I spent an hour watching YouTube videos of this machine, which is a fascinating machine. But as far as I can tell, and this is not testimony yet, but like it comes on a roll. The raw material comes on a roll, you know, out of a truck. They mount it on a school and it goes through the machine without, for the processing. Obviously, you want more information than that, but, but based on sort of the breadcrumbs that they've left, I don't, I don't think that's.
Yeah, everything you said up until the point that it comes out of the machine, I agree with that. That's what we did at Westinghouse in various forms, putting it through presses and everything else. What they're going to do is take the material, make it into a C-channel, a stud or whatever. And that still doesn't answer at the end of it, whether we have to have it degreased or not or whether they have to add something to it because metal studs will also rust right away if they keep them there. So I just, a little bit more about the end process would be, I could accept that entirely in a letter or something from somebody.
Right, and, and I'm perfectly happy to have my client, you know, consultation with their engineer, you know, get, you know, as part of the, if, if the board is more comfortable deferring till they hear us more, we can try and get as part of a response to the board from our, our engineer and our client.
Yeah, I think, I think. Come in. Can you add anything to this?
Well, you know, say, say claiming there's no degreasing, right? So that's, that's like Sean said, that's going to be part of the record. Say everything goes well, we issued a perm, issued a C O. They'll get in there once a year to do fire inspections and we'll have to look for things like that. No degreasing. It's more work on the, on the building department, again, as somebody had mentioned here, but it could be done.
And you said you can get us a letter further explaining the process?
Right, so my, right, so my client's retaining an engineer. My engineer is expecting to have a submission to the planning board, you know, first, first week of, first week of December. And I can, I can tell my client and their engineer that as part of the, you know, their submission to include, you know, a formal statement as to their, you know, whether or not there's going to be any degreasing, use of chemicals,
oils.
Oils like that, and part of, you know, and part of the processing of the materials once they're, once they come out of the machine. Or before they go into the machine.
It's going to be available first week of December. I would like to see this. I would like to see this week to let.
Was anything asked or stated about what kind of noise is coming out of this machine?
Can we, uh, if you don't know, question is?
What kind of noise?
Noise.
Because it is a residential area as well as manufacturing and agriculture, there are people living there.
I think at your meeting in September, you, you had requested that they include the, the decibel.
It, it's in the dispatch. Yeah, the chair says that. I don't remember what the number was, but it was in that for sure.
Uh, the machine, yeah, in the, in the specs, it says machine sound while, while in operation at seventy to eighty decibels while in operation.
Seventy, eighty decibels as the source?
Yeah, yeah, from, from, sorry, I said from the, from the source.
And that's a metal building, so does it perform after? After it hits all the walls and everything?
So you suggested, I'm sorry.
My suggestion was wait until the, the term gets submitted. It's, it's saying that they're only talking about a month or so or less.
Well, why don't we get a, a letter explaining the machinery and the process and the byproducts? So we have a, a clear understanding of what it is we're considering.
Okay.
When do you think you might be able to have that?
So the most recent contact I had with the engineer, they are anticipating, you know, a submit, you know, a submission to the planning board on or around December fifth. So obviously, that's, that's not, that's too late for the neck, for the next planning board meeting. So, you know, if you want to put us over for a month so you have time to review what we, what we submitted early December.
Neil would bring us to work.
Thank you.
Nineteenth. Sorry, I suggest that we, uh, adjourn until the nineteenth. What? Yeah, I just want to, anybody else? We have members of the public who would like to speak to this matter?
Question?
Your name, please.
My name is June Evers, I'm on Gate Schoolhouse Road off of Maple Avenue. What my concern is, what kind of trucks are going in and out of, of this road? How many a day? Um, and, you know, which direction would they be going? Would they be going seventeen, I mean, uh, Maple Ave to that way or that way?
So the initial, so my client's, you know, application, the original submission to the board indicated they were, they would expect deliveries made once per week. And one to two truckloads of material leaving the, the, the building per day.
Is this semis or?
What did you track the trailers?
I don't believe they were tracked the trailers, but I can have my client, I can have my client, I can have my client confirm that.
Okay, I see. Yes?
My name is Marie Hartman, I also live on part of the Gate Schoolhouse Club. Um, and I'd like to know, do we get to ask what they make there before you just go ahead and say it's okay? Do you at least get to know what kind of products they're doing there? Are you allowed to ask that or not?
I thought they actually said that.
Yeah, they, they did an initiation, it was, uh.
They were giving metal studs.
Coils of steel and studs, joists and the like.
Okay, and are they going to be storing a lot of the metal there? And if they're going to store it, how are they stored? That's what I'd like to know.
I don't think the building's that big.
No, right. My, my understanding was they weren't, they weren't, they weren't contemplating much, you know, long-term storage because basically they'd be making stuff and shipping stuff out relatively contemporaneously. So I don't think there was many long-term storage of that much material.
As I recollection, the building is six thousand square feet?
Yes.
There's no proposal for outside storage.
Correct.
And it doesn't have a big port either.
So if you would be good enough to clap, have the engineer confirm that.
And it doesn't have a big port either.
So if you would be good enough to clap, have the engineer confirm that. You had?
Chris Haley and I do just want to follow up, I do agree with June. We all know that Celery Avenue is a farmer's road and it's built on collector. That road actually moves, so not only the volume of traffic in and out, the type of truck, number of axles, and the weight of the vehicles as our tax dollars do maintain that road.
It is, is that road where you're restricted to store?
I don't have a call now.
I know it's garbage, but.
Yeah, are there any other comments from the public? Alright, and I suggest we keep the meeting open, adjourn it until?
Motion to adjourn the public hearing until December nineteenth at seven thirty, or assuming thereafter, December eighteen. Zach Clark, you said you would be submitting earlier?
Yeah, my, my, my client's engineer is anticipating a submission by, submission to the planning board by twelve o'clock.
Three o'clock and twelve o'clock.
Not, not three oh one.
You can try it, we'll see how that works.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay.
Do we need a?
A motion on that.
Can we have a motion, uh, to keep the meeting open and to adjourn it until?
To adjourn the public hearing until December nineteenth at seven thirty.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Marty seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is David Dor- Dorwetsky. Is that where I have that right? Application for site plan approval on six point one, more or less acres along Pulaski Highway, County Route six in the A I zone. With E two-three and floodplain and timing, Seaneboro Corridor and stream corridor, corridor and water supply watershed overlays. Uh, this is for a part two E A F.
Yes, a part two and also the public hearing.
We're going to do the public hearing first?
Sure, you can open the public hearing.
Alright, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on the matter of David Dor- Dorwetsky. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ananemous. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
Not all at once.
Could the applicant just explain briefly what was being proposed?
Marcelo Ceriglana, Johnson Foley, and Ceriglana, the applicant, Mr. Dorwetsky, who is to my right. What's being proposed is a clearing of an area for parking purposes. Also to clean up the area, this was always known as a section of Pulaski Highway where people would dump furniture, other garbage, household items. That just made it look horrible. Also, uh, an area where trucks would pull off on the side of the road and get stuck in the, in the dirt. Since, uh, the area has been, uh, improved since that time. And actually, uh, the Orange County D P W has routinely parked their trucks there while they're doing work in the area. Mr. Dorwetsky has also put on his annual nine eleven tribute with fire trucks and flags. And he also parked trucks there that are going to be for sale that he has, uh, his businesses across the street. And he was just looking to improve this area.
Would you like to add anything else?
No, I, I just wanted to clean the area up and make it look better and that's it.
Dave, did you fill in the area over there?
Nothing was really filled, we removed some topsoil and just put stone down.
Because there. Dave is my neighbor out in Blackdorn, I don't know if I should take in and recuse myself or not. But I am quite surprised that you're being picked on the way you are for that property. Especially when your neighbor on the other side of the commission ditch filled it in with three feet of all kinds of soil, and we have no idea where it came from. You've cleaned up that area, which looks really wonderful now considering what the dures had it way back when. It used to be a farm stand there and then it became the dumping ground and he's cleaned it up and it looks really, really nice. I was looking at your E A F, which we haven't gotten to yet, and one of the items was that it's in the hundred acre flood zone. But even when Sandy hit and it was horrible and then everything got wet, your property on the other side, mine was completely flooded. That piece of property never got wet. So I, I, I'm just concerned why we're picking on Dave so much.
Okay, so, uh, this, this is Ryan here, building inspector. A few years back, uh, the, the D E C wrote a letter to the building department with ten, twelve parcels, all in the Blackdorn, all filling operations. They were concerned about floodplain development permits. So I started, one at a time, putting them on notice. Working with Dave, working, he got a floodplain development permit. It's in front of you, you have the board here because of these overlay districts. Otherwise, I could have took care of it right in the building department. It's the overlay districts, I brought it to the board, so I'm not picking on anybody.
I'm not saying you are.
But I'm addressing, I'm addressing the letter.
I'm not picking on the people that are violating.
Like I said, one at a time, and they, they're all notified as per that letter. I'm not going to mention the other parcels here.
I know, I can't either.
But it is being addressed. As we know, the D E C doesn't go away. Might be quiet for a while, but another, another letter's coming.
It's just that what Dave is doing, it seems like, I, you know, I originally thought you were going to put a building on there.
Yeah, I just had some free material, I wanted to clean up the, clean up the stuff, clean it up and make it look presentable and. I take pride in my property, I like keep stuff nice and neat and.
So, if I may, Sean?
Yes.
In as much as the applicant is looking to clean up his property, maybe Frank, you can answer, why is this matter before us?
That's a great question, and I tried to, um, clarify that because I had this same question. I tried to clarify that in my September twelfth note to the board. So, um, we asked the applicant for a survey, and the reason we asked the applicant for a survey is the overlay districts, as Frank mentioned, you're over a certain amount of square footage. It triggers site plan approval. You're very familiar with this in terms of swimming pools and decks and things like that, right? If you're in the Seaneboro Corridor and you're five hundred square feet, you need a site plan pool. Very similar situation to this applicant, exactly, to ground service. So, uh, we, we had surveyed and we confirmed, we wouldn't bring things to you unless we asked it, right? We're not going to bring something for a site plan pool, they don't need a site plan pool. So, uh, there were two instances, both the floodplain and the Seaneboro Corridor, and the airport that the applicant did, and then on the ground service, like I said, requires site plan approval. So what I think Frank's trying to do is address the D E C concern, uh, to the town, because that would be a no spot, it's been a town enough for the applicant or individual applicant. And also trying to clean up the site plan so that the applicant now has a clean site plan in the building department for, you know, that this work was proved. There's no problems going forward, if there's any municipal search or anything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any board comments? Any other? Any further public comments?
No.
He's telling me no.
No.
No, don't say it. Yeah, I would like to say that I have seen the property and I think the improvements that he's made so far are better. I agree, just absolutely cleaning the property up is good for the town.
Actually, in, in as much as we're, we'll be looking now at the Form two E, E A F. Does that impact at all, uh, closing the meeting or?
No, you can close the public hearing.
Okay. Well, in as much as there's no further public comments, we appreciate the comments we've received. Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Danny, sorry to you, but.
It's all good.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, unanimous, it's closed, public hearing is closed and thank each of you for your comments.
So the first motion would be a motion to assume lead agency status under secret?
Someone like to make that motion? Okay, Marty makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Unanimous.
So Kelly did prepare an E A F part two, and I'll just highlight, most of the, or all of the items were checked, no or small impact. There were a few that were noted as small, one of them, they had noted that the property is within hundred-year floodplain. That may contribute to flooding because of that. And there was another small impact for, for habitats, I believe that is the bats. And then, um, it came up as a potentially archaeological sensitive area as well. I believe those were all the, the small impacts, the boards in agreement with the E A F part two, it would be appropriate to approve a motion to adopt the E A F part two. Uh, please, a motion.
Any, any discussion? Uh, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, there's a motion to adopt the E A F part two, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimously approved.
And then it would be appropriate to adopt a negative declaration, I don't have one prepared for you this evening, but you can have that ready for your next meeting.
Okay. We have a, uh, motion to adopt a negative declaration subject to preparation, uh, of the declaration at the next meeting?
Sure, are you, are you going to motion to authorize the planning board attorney to draft a negative declaration?
Ready, yeah.
So.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Unanimously approved.
Can we just ask the site plan at all? I have no power of the site plan, I'm just wondering if we can make a motion to have the, the board attorney?
Draft a resolution.
Draft a resolution, but I didn't want people to have concerns.
Does anyone have any concerns, Senator?
No.
Make your motion.
Make a motion that have the planning board attorney, uh, draw a resolution of approval?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, they, they have any discussion on that?
Yeah, am I confused because I, I saw a draft resolution?
There was one drafted for this already, yes.
Okay, never mind. Nice work.
Well, yes.
It wasn't listening to.
I can actually.
Did the board have any comments? Although you have to wait to, to adopt that resolution until the next deck is adopted, did the board have any comments on the draft resolution?
Yeah, we, let's see. Condition number five, specific condition number five. The applicant shall obtain approval from the Orange County D P W for prior discoveries that occurred on the property if required. And I had added and submit to the D, D P W engi- engineering. Lines for the private, private, private satisfactory to D P, D P W. But now that I understand what's going on here, well, fully, I don't think we need, we need that. So, I take it back.
Okay.
No comment. We're done with this matter?
Nothing else for me?
Okay. Next matter is Numa Food Group Upstate Court, um, application for amended site plan and special permit. Expansion of an existing food production facility on six and a half Station Road and the apartment seventeen.
Mr. Jerry. I have conflicted out of this application, but I will wait in the back to go over your next agenda if you'd like to see more of your chart.
The next agenda, right, is the?
No, the next, next agenda items, your?
Next meeting?
Next meeting agenda.
Oh, well, why don't you leave?
No, I'll, I'll stick around and go over there.
Love what we do with that.
Sorry, Sean.
And you do have your complex and your new president.
Yes. Dave, welcome back.
Good to be back. Just a few minutes ago.
You're representing the?
Milmar Foods.
Okay.
That's what we're on, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a left.
Okay, so just to recap where we are, so the, the planning board originally approved the special use permit and the site plan for the project in December twenty twenty two. We had a number of extensions, last extension we had was raised on June sixth, twenty twenty four, which extends the approval out to, I believe, honor, is in honor about December fifth of twenty twenty four. What we were looking to do, what I submitted to the board, was a proposal to phase the construction, phase the, actually phase the approval and phase the construction of the site. Their real, excuse me, their real concern is they, they need to get the freezer building constructed. They have, if you remember when we were doing the original approval on this, their current freezer is located in New Jersey. So they have trucks coming and going to New Jersey, they have a lease which is going to expire and they're anxious to get the construction of the freezer building going. One of the conditions of the approval that is an approval that the board granted was that we evaluate the onsite septic system. We did do an evaluation of that, we basically found that it doesn't seem that they have an onsite septic system. Don't know when it happened, who, you know, if that was a prior owner, but it looks like the, the septic is being, was being discharged to the, the aeration loom. So what Milmar did a number of months ago was put a frac tank on the site, so now they're pumping their wastewater, domestic wastewater into that tank and then they haul it off to a suitable disposal facility. We view that as a short-term solution, not a long-term solution. So as I put in my letter, which we submitted to the board, was that that long-term solution could be connection to municipal or community facility or potentially they may have to put a, a small package plant on for the domestic supply. Again, that's a long-term solution and what we're looking to do is basically phase the construction so that it would consist of really the freezer building and we included also in that the dry storage, the access corridor and the garbage room, really because they're connected to this portion of the building and otherwise it's going to be difficult to, to construct that if, if the freezer building is done and now you've got other walls in there that you're going to have to do. So this is really just so that they can get to the freezer building and build that. That would be the first phase and then the main portion, which is the connection around the back and there was the, I think it was the production room, the chef's tasting room and the boxing room would be all part of the second phase. So that's what we're looking to do. You know, your, it's our opinion that these changes are, you know, doesn't, they don't represent a significant change, that the project can still be consistent with the original approval and that we're not going beyond the bounds of anything, we're not changing the building orientation, access and those things. So that's what we would be requesting from the board.
So the existing hold and haul facility, temporary, so which, how temporary is that?
Well, I mean, we have to, originally when we had worked this up, there was a plan that you might remember, at one point in time, we were proposing to connect this site to the village of Gojha, both in terms of their water and their sewer. We actually had plans prepared. At one point in time, the village had sent a letter, they provided a letter saying that we could connect to both water and sewer. Probably around the time Legoland came on board, I think the village changed their tune on what water was available and they provided a, a letter that said they don't have water to provide to Milmar, they don't have water to provide to, you know, places outside the village. So we, Milmar had essentially at that time abandoned the, the plans to connect to their water system and to their sewer system. We may still be able to apply to the village to see if they can still, if they have capacity for sewer, we think that they may, but that would be one possible solution. The plan for that actually involved not just Milmar at the time we were doing that and this was something that was discussed with the town, the village, the county, there were a number of properties along there that potentially could tie into that or Milmar could do it alone, but it was to run sewer line via a forest vein all the way down there to its trail to connect into the village wastewater treatment system. Again, that's something that would be overall, long-term, their, both their domestic wastewater and their industrial wastewater. I don't know that we're going to do that, it's an option. Another option is, like I said, to put an onsite package plant for domestic to accompany the existing wastewater treatment facility that they're running. So they have options.
Right.
We have to, we have to work those three.
I'm not, I'm not cutting off anybody speaking here, but we do have a substitute engineer in lieu of Sean, would you like to add any comments?
Sure, so we received these plans.
I'm sorry, you name.
Oh, I'm Kelly from Pitt Garrett Ouch, Kelly Orne. We received these plans last week and the corresponding Kelly Gotten to catch up on the project and its current status and reviewed the conditional approval and the last two memos prepared by our half-breed engineering and complying with those two memos were one of the conditions in the resolution, among other conditions such as confirming the septic tank's structural integrity, inspecting and digesting the wastewater disposal system, submitting a SWIP, revising the plans and submitting an impact evaluation for the additional employees. So if the applicant, then we could surprise the board on the status of all those conditions in addition to the one that we're making now.
We would certainly have no objection to those continuing to be conditions and we can address those. The, the one, like I said, that we would not be able to address was the demonstrating that the septic system that was on site was capable of handling the, the additional fifty employees that was cited in the, in the resolution. So we haven't done the other items largely because of that.
The SWIP hasn't been prepared.
We, we provided a SWIP report, but I believe there was some phasing plan was what we needed to provide to Sean, to the town engineer at this point, I guess.
Yeah, for the five acres.
For, for the five acres, yes.
Yeah, so that should be incorporated.
And again, this phasing, this phasing would actually address that. Again, if the board was to approve the, the, you know, approve this as a phase, each of these, I think the total that we had for, the entire area of disturbance was five point zero acres, if I remember correctly. You know, we're looking at roughly half of that for the first phase and roughly half of the second, so again, we could update the SWIP report and resubmit it, but it's basically just going to show disturbance less, at, at any one time, less than five acres, which was, which was what I think generated that comment.
All conditions will need to be met before any building permit is capable to be filed, so.
Yeah, so we have no objection to any of the conditions except for the one that required us to demonstrate that the septic system that was on site could accept an additional fifty employees, we can't do that.
Okay.
That's what's delayed the project.
And then on the matter of the wastewater, I just wanted to note that the D E C typically did not allow a pumping wall to last more than a few months, so this is truly temporary and I'm not sure that any new expansion of the facility until the wastewater is addressed will make sense because you don't want to construct something that then can't be used because it's a bigger problem again.
I have called the D E C and spoke with them about this, I, you know, was told I would be contacted back with more information and an answer. I still haven't received that, but I did reach out to them and spoke with, with someone from the D E C.
From our experience, they tend not to like pump the whole place.
And, and that's not our long-term plan, our long-term plan is to do something that's going to be, again, a permanent solution.
So to install, to use a hold and haul facility, you did not need prior approval, prior approval from the D E C?
That I don't know. Again, I, I spoke with them after the fact, Milmar apparently had put the tank in when they realized that the septic was going into the aeration loom.
Well, it's, it's done, so.
It's there.
Right. So, you know, this is not entirely your control, if you can get some hang on how long the hold and haul facility would be operating, I think that would be helpful to us and clearly clear as that. D E C, that is not a big fan of these types of facilities. Anything further?
I don't think so, I think for our office's purposes, it would be helpful if the applicant could supply a letter explaining how all of the conditions in the prior approval have been addressed since twenty twenty two and submit a revised plan set that shows those conditions being addressed and then from there we can continue to review the application.
Yeah, I, it was, it was, again, we have no objection to the conditions that were there, we believe we can certainly provide those, again.
Yeah, I would just say if you're looking to get a building permit, that would expedite.
Yes, they're all looking for the building permit, we're also looking for a conditional amended approval with the same conditions we had before, again, because of the timeframe. So this approval is set to expire in December, so.
So that would start the running of the clock?
If we reset the clock, if we were to obtain a conditional amended approval with the same conditions we had before, again, I'm just being forthright, the only condition that we can't meet is the one that's related to the septic.
If I could ask, what's the, what's the permanent solution for the septic? That's, we took the question right out of the.
So that's what we're saying, is we have the, the potential to connect to the, the village of Gojha's wastewater treatment facility or an onsite package plant that treats the domestic wastewater and discharge either subsurface or to the Rio Grande, which is what the industrial facility does. But they, they want those to be separate, the D E C specifically wants this domestic and industrial wastewater to be separated for treatment, but the discharge could presumably be in the same location.
So I'm a little confused at the intent here is to begin construction of this phase one, right?
Yes.
Okay. In order to do that, you have to satisfy all the conditions in the resolution of approval.
Of the, of whatever resolution of approval this board adopts, yes.
Correct. You're saying that the one condition you can't meet, so I'm a little confused at how you intend to pull a building permit to start construction without meeting all of the conditions of the?
Which is why we need a amended approval.
Removing that one condition about the?
Correct, and to, to limit the, the construction to, really it's the freezer that they want.
Film.
But, but we still have the hauling going on for this whole time?
The hauling would continue, yes.
I, I, personally, as, as a board member, I'm not comfortable removing that condition without having a solid plan as to what they're doing with their wastewater.
Frank, can you?
Oh, yeah, I just had a couple of questions, I, I totally understand your concern and, and David, it's a freezer, that's all you're looking for, so you're not increasing employees or?
That, that is correct, I mean, it is just a freezer and like I said, we had included the other portion here, which again, on the original approval was the dry storage, the access corridor, the garbage room, but that's because they basically connect to the, to the freezer. If they build this and they don't build this, then they've got, you know, now two walls that they're going to have to demise later for the purpose of the extension.
Yeah.
But, and again, if, if the board wanted to just permit the freezer and, and make sure that no COB issued for that portion, they probably could do that, it just presents a problem in terms of the construction.
So Ashley, let me ask you a question, could we have as a condition that they develop, implement and install a waste treatment facility acceptable to the board and its consultants?
So I think you would need to, and I, I would suggest for, for one, not issuing any amended approval this evening, I think you could have a resolution, a draft, if anything, amended resolution prepared for the December fifth meeting, which is before the current site plan would expire.
This is the last one, right? The last extension?
This would be the last, yes, it would be. Or they're on their last extension already, so if it expires on, if it's not amended on December fifth, then, then it would expire. So I think that's something that'll have to be worked out into the, the resolution in terms of the phasing and when they have to have that, that plan in place and what that plan is going to, to look like.
Could we put a, a timeframe when, when, for how long they can use this whole, you know, stored whole tank and so it doesn't go on indefinitely?
Sure, I think, I think you can, I don't know if there's a standard, or I mean, it's related to the D E C, I guess, what they would, would have.
Well, can we, or could they, can we reword that?
If I have a speedies permit.
Can we rephrase that condition to, to, in order to satisfy this concern, can we reword that condition to state that they have to have a, a plan for wastewater, a, a plan to deal with wastewater that's acceptable to the D E C?
One thing if I can add it, and I think it was a, a good point you made, is that, I mean, they are under a speedies permit with the D E C and actually that permit is set to expire, their speedies permit, I believe it's August of twenty five, because again, I, I reached out to the D E C for the express purpose of speaking with them about the hold and haul and about the, the renewal of the speedies permit on next August. So that was the conversation I had and that was the, the call back that I was expecting to receive from the D E C, but I, I do intend to, to finish that conversation with it because Milmar will have to renew their permit, their speedies permit in, before August of twenty five.
Are you suggesting that you're going to build a package plant with a surface discharge rather than a subsurface system?
It may be, yeah, they, they already have a surface discharge of their industrial process, yes.
Yeah, to look at, but for the sanitary as well.
Potentially, yes, that, that would be one of the things we could talk to them about.
What's your concern about that? Sounds like the other concern.
Well, approving an expansion of a facility that may end up in limbo with a speedies permit may not be advisable, but I'll defer to the council.
So I think my, my question would be in terms of secret, so you had previously issued a, a neck deck and I guess the question would be how is this kind of the unknown of what's going to be the wastewater impact, how does that fall under, under the, under your prior super review? If there's some more?
Well, in.
Or lies of plan?
In terms of the phasing, I think that the, the main issue at the time was the increase in the number of employees and that, how that related to things like water use, sewer use, and that's essentially why we were looking at the, at the septic. I don't know what the end result's going to be with the D E C, but, I mean, I don't know how long their domestic wastewater was going into the loom. Could be that the D E C comes back and says, well, it's not ideal, but that's okay, I don't know if that'll be the case. If they say that we should do surface discharge, then that's, that's what we're going to do. But again, I think that's going to be worked out as part of the, the renewal of the speedies permit with D E C.
What timeframe would that take to make the approval?
The approval of what?
Well, I'm looking, for the resolution of, of store, of wastewater, can we expect it to be able to be approved in six months or a year?
It depends upon what that, what, what direction that one's going.
Why not, why not work with both at the same time and say, all right, if you ever want to get to full first octave, start moving on it maybe. I'm, I'm not much, I, I don't particularly care whether it goes to the village of Gojha or a legitimate wastewater treatment plant, but I do care that it happens and it happened relatively quickly and so kind of, I realize D E C's limbo sometimes, but if you're starting both processes at the same time, you should be able to come up with an answer to us in six months.
I, I agree that parallel paths, whether it's the village or an onsite package plant, because you don't want to hope that it's going to the village in six months, they say, no, we can't accept anymore, then it's start again and try and develop an onsite plant.
Well, again, like I said, their speedies permit is set to expire in August, so that is what, ten, nine months away.
But that's a speedies permit for the industrial.
It's a speedies permit for the facility, which, which includes domestic and, and the, and the industrial. And that's again, why we reached out to D E C because the domestic is not supposed to be going into the industrial and it has been, for how long, we don't know, but we want to remedy that. And that's, again, we'll have to work out what, what, what the remedy is with the D E C prior to August of, of twenty five and, and I suspect that the D E C, whatever the solution is, will probably still say, you have some time to make that, you know, to make that change. It's not something that's going to happen, you know, in a period of months. Because whatever that solution is, it has to be designed, has to be reviewed, has to be approved. Equipment has to be purchased. It's going to take time to get that done.
But they also can't wait for that freezer. Because they're also, the freezer solely that.
That's my understanding. They've been pushing me on freezer for a long time. But this issue has been the one we're trying to determine.
To your point about the prior project on that same road, you know, we proposed two years ago. And if they really need freezer, they could have done it two years ago, you know?
We couldn't. Not with the conditions of approval that were listed and our ability to.
Right. I mean, we're two weeks away from the expiration of the final extension.
It seems like more work could have been done.
So with respect to the clock, if we amend the resolution, does that extend the clock on both phases?
So it would be a site plan amendment. So it would, I believe, restart the clock altogether. So it would be essentially, it's an approved, amended site plan that would be approved. So you get the same timeframe, which in total would be two years.
And those, and they move sort of in parallel for the two phases? Like, why is the phasing so?
So the phasing, why I just say is because of, that will allow them to do the freezer portion without adding any additional employees or anything that would impact the wastewater.
But isn't it also to restart the clock?
Yes, well, that's.
I think that's, I think that's the prime motive.
So that's the chain that they're seeking in order to accomplish that.
But from Milmar's perspective, it's not just the starting clock. They really do want to start construction ASAP.
I really appreciate that one is our instruction. I really do hope it goes through. But I really am nervous about this whole wastewater thing being kicked out of the road. I can picture a year from now saying, well, we could get that approved. Now we're going to start looking at this. It's going to take us a while because we have to design it and buy the equipment. I would much rather hear that in six months or at the, at least by August, you have the plans in place and you are ready to order the equipment that day.
I understand it. But like I said, we have to go back to D E C.
That's what I'm saying, always.
One question. Dave, did you suggest if this worked, if this plays out, a permit would be issued for the freezer but not the C O pending the remediation of this domestic sanitary?
That could work, I suppose, yes. It gives them time to.
I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
Yeah, I mean, I know their intent is to use the freezer ASAP. But obviously, it has to be built before it can be used. And they're pushing for construction. That may be something that could work.
So you were looking for a C O for the freezer, but not the small section of building in between?
Like I said, I think those were added more because they connect. And you've got walls now, you're, you know, could you potentially build this and only have the connection here? And then when you do this later, you're going to have, you know, there's a lot of work to be done here on walls that otherwise would have been demised once. Now you've got to demise them on both sides.
Right, I don't think it's looking for a C O. I think you're going to commit to refurbish or replace the freezer and.
This is the main goal right here, this.
That's new, right? It's all new building, new walls.
Not to get a C O until the entire facility has been built out, including the wastewater treatment plant. Am I right, Frank?
Not necessarily the entire facility that's been built out. But the wastewater issue is resolved. That's what I thought was suggested earlier. And I just want to clarify that for the planning board to think about as we proceed.
And don't they have no wastewater resolved towards it?
It's a hold-and-hall. It's just hold-and-hall.
It's a temporary facility. It's literally, the waste goes in there and they haul it out with a truck.
So we approve something that they don't have an answer from, or they don't have a status to improve?
I think we have to, that's a good question.
The thing with the freezer, you know, I, Albert, kind of repeat, I think we all know it. There's no additional employees, not really affecting the domestic use. That's my understanding, right? And they may be looking for a permit for that start, but not the certificate of occupancy until the domestic sewer situation has a permanent solution.
Right.
I think there's a little bit of risk. This thing could go on for a couple of years. But that's my understanding of what a possibility could be.
It could be. Like I said, I do know they want to occupy it after it's constructed. It certainly has to be constructed first.
So we would approve the amendment, Frank?
Yep.
Subject to what you just said.
So I would suggest if you were going to take action to wait until the meeting on the 5th, that would be get prepared, something for you to consider.
So defer, defer action tonight until the 5th.
Will it be able to act on the 5th? Or do you have to have a resolution prepared to make the meeting?
I would have that prepared for the 5th.
For the 5th, okay, understood, okay.
Gio, are you comfortable?
This does also need to be referred to Orange County Planning Department. So Kelly usually does.
I believe Kelly does.
So before we move on, like, there's clearly some legislative intent behind keeping these extensions to two years. Is there, and so there's a good reason for that? Is there any way for us to keep control of the calendar of this thing such that, you know, it's not another two years sort of at the applicant's discretion that this thing could sort of get?
I think it's part of the phasing, the speedies phase approval. If there's some timeframes that could impose with that, you want to keep them on a single interest fixing the wastewater issue that, and that maybe by not giving the C O for the freezer until that, you know, issue's resolved, is Frank, to suggest it. So I understand they want to use that sooner, but.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
The problem that they have is, I see it, they're not in control of the situation. They have to deal with the D E C to resolve the wastewater treatment issue. And I agree with you. I want to incent, incent them to move along. I'm not sure what the mechanism is.
So Phil, that's where my discomfort is, right? They've had two years to work out this wastewater issue. And we don't even know how long they've known about it, right? And what's the, Frank, do you know what the D E C's position on commingling the sewage disposal and the domestic disposal and the industrial wastewater?
Yeah, I don't know the protocol. I don't know, I don't know that.
I mean, this could, this could open up Pandora's box if they have a situation that the D E C is, I mean, it could blow up in our faces, right? And this can go on till doomsday.
No, no, it can't go on till doomsday. No, no, because if we, what they're saying, I think, I believe what they're asking is were we to amend the site plan? That would start, the furthest extension out that they could get was two years from the approval of the amended site plan. So there's a two-year horizon where if they don't meet it, if they're not done by then, they're probably not going ahead.
But they've had two years, right?
I know. And so worst-case scenario, they're getting a notice three years.
But they can go.
That's.
Yeah, and then they're going to re-phase it. Now we'll have to re-phase it.
We can then decide.
Restart the clock again.
We can then decide that, sorry.
I'm not sure how our timeframe is working. If we had granted approval to build the freezer, but not give them the C O, could the C O be held until the wastewater issue is solved? Frank? You know, let them proceed if we were to go down this path. Let them proceed with building the freezer, but cannot be occupied or used, no C O, until the wastewater, domestic wastewater issue is solved.
And I think that's what you would.
That's, I was just to, just to open the discussion on that. But that would be, Ashley, that would be part of the specific finding in the resolution.
Yeah, it would have to be a condition, of course.
And they want to build a freezer and use it right away. And that's their, that's their risk that they would be taking in terms of constructing it, knowing that they may not be able to occupy for some period of time.
Well, it'd be an incentive to.
Correct. I mean, they're going to have incentive anyway, I believe, when we actually, you know, can hear back from the D E C. And we talked about, again, furthering that discussion about the renewal of the permit. I think, you know, they're going to, they're going to have to do that. I don't think that they're going to be able to just, you know.
How close are they to having paperwork ready to submit for?
Excuse me, how close what?
Do they have paperwork ready for submission for the permit? Do they have the engineered plans for the building or?
I believe the architect has the majority of the building plans for that done. Yeah, I mean, they've been, they've been working at this. I mean, I know you haven't seen these, you know, since the original approval, but they have been working towards this. This has been an issue they've known for probably six.